Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Campbell?
Here.
McAfee?
Here.
Strabel?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Brake?
Here.
Elliott? Keener?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Okay. This time, have fed to the flag led by Alderman McAfee.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Next on the agenda is the reading of proclamations, and there are none. Also, we have on a presentive notice of the public hearing on amending the budget and appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2021, and ending March 31st, 2022. Madam Clerk.
Notice is hereby given by the corporate authorities of the City of Alton, Illinois, that the amended budget and appropriation documents for the City of Alton for the fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2021, will be on file and conveniently available to public inspection at the comptroller's office, 101 East Third Street, Alton, Illinois, beginning 9:00 a.m. on September 30th, 2021, and thereafter for not less than 10 days. Notice is further hereby given that a public hearing on the appropriation ordinance for the City of Alton for the fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2021, will be held at 6:30 p.m. on the 13th day of October, 2021, in the Alton City Council Chambers, 101 East Third Street, Alton, Illinois, and that action by the city council will be taken on said appropriation ordinance at the regular council meeting thereafter, dated this 30th day of September, 2021.
Questions or comments from the aldermen and women? Questions or comments from the public? See, there is none. Five, we will move to the approval of amendments of the regular meeting of September 22nd, 2021. Motion and a second to place on file.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Strabel, second by Alderman Campbell, chair so order.
It was Rosie.
Alderman Brown, chair so order. Number six, communications? Are any communications?
No.
Number seven, we have the report of officers' monthly treasures report for September 2021. Have a motion and a second to place on file.
So move.
Second. Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Campbell, chair so order. Number eight, report of standing committee.
Committee of the whole meeting report for October 11, 2021, I'd like to place on file.
Second.
A resolution, finance committee bills be allowed in payment being made. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please call roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Be resolution authorizing enclosure of Logan Street to facilitate Alton High School homecoming game. Make a motion to deny. Or? Has to approve it again. Or has to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please call roll.
Campbell?
No.
McAfee?
No.
Strabel?
Nay.
Brown?
Nay.
Brake?
Nay.
Elliott? Keener?
Nay.
Zero ayes, six nays, one absent.
See resolution authorizing enclosure of Fletcher Street to facilitate a festival. Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Please call roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Do you resolution authorizing no parking signs be placed on the east side of the 700 block of Silver Street? I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Please call roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Do you resolution authorizing enclosure of Lincoln Square to facilitate the sleep-out fundraising event? This motion was laid over. Uh, F. Resolution, consider amending the City Code Title IV, Chapter III, Section 7 regarding hotel motel short-term rental units and related matters. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please call roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
See resolution regarding the, to consider adopting Title IV, Chapter 22 of the City Code regarding short-term occupancy of rental units, licensing, and advertisements. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please call roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake? Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, one absent.
H, be resolved by the City Council of City of Alton, Illinois, that the best bid for S. Schaefer Excavating, Inc., for 1218 Clausen Street in the amount of $9,450, be awarded for bid 2021-19 Building and Zoning Department. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please call roll.
Is that second?
Charlie.
Charlie, okay.
Please call roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Campbell. Number nine, first reading of ordinances, and I believe Alderman Campbell in substitution for Alderman Elliott.
Can I have first reading of ordinance 7814?
No, she reads it.
Okay. Can I have the first reading of ordinance 7814?
Ordinance number 7814 for first reading, and ordinance rezoning 1401 Washington Avenue, Alton, Illinois, from R2 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial District.
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Please call roll.
I think you have to call roll.
Call the roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Can I have the second reading of 7814?
Ordinance number 7814 for second reading.
No, we're just gonna approve it because it's already suspending the rules.
Point of order, don't we have, isn't that two votes? Suspend the rules and then?
Yeah, we have to, we have to, she has to read a second reading and then we?
Right.
That's why she's doing the second reading. Okay, thank you.
And ordinance rezoning 1401 Washington Avenue, Alton, Illinois, from R2 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial District, ordinance number 7814 for second reading.
Make a motion to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Okay, motion by Alderman Campbell, second by Alderman Brake. Madam Clerk.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Okay. Can I have the first readings of ordinance 7815 and 7816, please?
Ordinance number 7815 for first reading, and ordinance rezoning 1840 North Rogers Avenue, Alton, Illinois, from C2 General Commercial District to R2 Single Family Residential, ordinance number 7815 for first reading. Ordinance number 7816 for first reading, and ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter IV, Section 10 of the City Code regarding number of liquor licenses, ordinance number 7816 for second reading.
Make a motion to lay over.
Both of them.
Both of them.
Second.
Yes, take roll on that.
Yes, you have to go.
Madam Clerk, please call a roll. There's motion, motion by Alderman Campbell, layover, second by?
Carolyn.
Okay. Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
We've already done 10.
Yes. Number 11, reports and our resolutions of special committees. 12, other business. 13, there are no appointments tonight. 14, no resignation. 15, approval of actions taken under suspension of rules at prior meeting. A, the resolution regarding authorizing the closure of State Street to facilitate a piece of public art on the roadway. The final approval?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Campbell, second by Alderman McAfee. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
16, public forum addressing city business, and we have four that have requested for the floor tonight. We need a motion and a second to allow each speaker to have five minutes.
Do I read this?
Yeah, he needs to read who they are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so Michael Bachelor, Jacob Tepin, Kathleen Rozak, and Janelle Robinson. I make a motion to give them each five minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion by Alderman Campbell, second by Alderman McAfee. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown? Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Okay. Uh, Janelle Robinson?
Hi, how is everyone this evening?
Good evening.
Hi to you, Lita. My name is Janelle Robinson, and I work at Alton Memorial Hospital with the Center for Behavior and Addiction Medicine. I'm just here to briefly inform you of our services that we provide for those that are struggling with substance use disorder. Our programs consist of an inpatient program where the individual can stay three to seven days, and they would be under the care of a doctor as well as 24-hour supervision nursing staff. They'll also work with the peer recovery specialists, who are individuals with lived experiences, to provide them with additional services for aftercare, getting them linked to different residential or counselors, or if they want to do groups of anything of that nature. Our second program is what I like to call the Golden Nugget. Our program strategized on three barriers that individuals have that are struggling with substance use disorder. No insurance, no funds to pay for medication, and no transportation. So with this program, we were one of the seven hospitals to be awarded a federal grant to be able to provide the funding for those individuals to seek, that are seeking help, to get that help. So with that being said, an individual is able to come through our ER department 24 hours, seven days a week, but they must be in withdrawal in order to be induced on Suboxone or provided Librium. It's our outpatient service, so therefore the peer recovery specialist works with them as far as providing them a bridge script, discharging them with Narcan, and then providing them services through a doctor that we're connected with, that will continue with them with either the Suboxone or the Librium. I wanted to share this information. We're working with our police department. We've branched out to Edwardsville Police Department, and we're successful there, and then we've branched out to several other programs. I found that it was more lucrative to actually go to the city council meetings, therefore connecting with the community for those that are here as well as the council. I have information, I brought in about two weeks ago, packets for the council, men and women, and the mayor, and it was put in your mailbox. I'm not for sure if you're able to get to it or not, but I wanted to be able to bring it in ahead of time so you guys could review it. But I also brought additional information. So I'll leave it back on the seat, or would you like me to leave it on the table if anyone is interested in receiving that information? Loved ones, friends, whoever in need. Just wanted to put that information out there, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Kathleen Rozak, speaking on behalf of the Warming Center, Alton.
Hi, everyone. Um, yeah, so I just wanted to come and speak about the sleep-out fundraiser event that we were wanting to have soon, and just kind of give you guys an idea of kind of what we expected that night to look like and what we were hoping to, um, to, um, to gain by that. Um, so we have hopes of hosting our event, um, November 11th, um, at Lincoln Douglas Square. Um, I did want to clarify, we weren't looking to actually make any closures. We didn't need any barricades or close off from the public. We just want our presence there, really. Um, we want it to be a respectful night, and what we intend to do is have participants sign up to spend the night outside at Lincoln Douglas Square and fundraise in order to be sponsored, to experience a night in the cold, in order to bring empathy and awareness to the people in our city who are experiencing homelessness and don't have the option of coming into a warm bed. And so, um, we had, um, our plans for the night are to, um, sorry, give me a breath, um, to have just a couple speakers. Um, we don't anticipate having any, or we will not have any microphones, amplification, anything like that, just speaking to the participants that are there, um, just with information about homelessness and kind of the struggles that they have to deal with. And we have a small activity that is just a printout for the participants to work through on their own, and then we will have the quote-unquote "lights out." Um, we don't expect any lights out, but just anticipating going and being off by ourselves and planning on settling in for the night at 9:00. Um, and then we would just spend the night there, and at 6:00 a.m. we would have warm coffee available, and we would send people off on their way for the day. Um, and so we like the idea of Lincoln Douglas Square just because of the visibility, and we do plan on inviting media, both local and like St. Louis media, and we just feel like that would be a great backdrop for this event and for the publicity that it could bring to Alton. Um, and, yeah, we just want that opportunity to fundraise, and while we want to use this as we move into the winter and anticipate having to activate our Warming Center, um, we also want to move into next steps for our people, our citizens experiencing homelessness, and as we can get them help that they need to be self-sufficient and hopefully one day in long-term housing. Hope for your time.
Thank you.
Could we ask the speakers to take their masks down? Because Charlie's have, I think Charlie's having a difficult understanding.
Yes, okay, so speakers, when you come to the microphone, you're, you're, you're allowed to take your mask down so we can hear you speak loud and clearly. Thank you, Kathleen.
Yeah.
And turn up the volume.
Yeah.
It's up all the way.
Okay, Jacob Tepin on Sunnybrook Public Works.
Good evening.
Jacob, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Tepin. I worked for the City of Alton Public Works for just over two years as a secretary in the office. I was involved in much of the normal day-to-day activities as well as a point of contact for our projects related to FEMA and the restoration efforts needed as a result of the flood that occurred in the summer of 2019, when I began. I was also a lead point of contact and advocate for the Netflix Holiday Light display that came to town in December of 2020 and oversaw the installation of that project. I'm here tonight to question some of the decisions made by the current administration and shed some light on a fallacy that has been sold to the president's fault. My first concern has to do with the proposed housing development complex commonly referred to as Sunnybrook. I will be direct with the points that I'd like to make with this development, as this development unfortunately has nothing stopping it any longer. And the current administration seems to be, in fact, supportive, as they have not once answered a direct question about it. At most, Mayor Donens has stated that he is in favor of affordable housing. I would however disagree that this is not affordable housing. Uh, I'd like to make two quick points regarding the fallacy that is Sunnybrook. The first is that this will provide affordable housing in Alton. The developers have stated that these units will rent from anywhere between $700 to $1,100 a month, and that they are aimed at entry-level workers making between $12 and $20 an hour. While this might seem nice at face level, the simple economics of this just don't make sense. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, the average cost of a home in Alton is $79,900. This is significantly less than the national average of $217,500, and even less than the Illinois average of $193,500. Therefore, it was deemed that we do already have affordable housing in Alton, and in fact is two to three times more affordable than the national, than the average elsewhere in the state or country. Now, when we consider the cost of rent versus homeownership, let's take that 79 and run it to an even 80. The estimated monthly payment for an $80,000 home with zero money down, 4.5% interest rate, and an average credit rating would be $577 a month. That includes insurance, taxes, and PMI. Let's boost that home price up to $100,000, and the estimated monthly payment would then be $722, the entry-level price for an apartment in Sunnybrook Development. Promoting homeownership should be the goal of the administration, not supporting wealthy developers that do not even live here. Additionally, you can bet that if they had a third way, they would, this would not be their only development. Dale Keller, a contractor for this development, owns a large plot of land on the west side of Washington Avenue, directly across the street from where Sunnybrook is being built. This parcel is more than large enough to hold a similar-sized development, and it stretches from Washington Avenue to Rock Springs Drive. Ed Hightower, who stands to make a million dollars at the completion of this development just for his involvement, owns multiple parcels of land on Bell Street, directly across the street from Alton Acres. This is no coincidence. These people are lying through their teeth when they tell you that they are doing this for the community and that they are investing in Alton. Dale Keller and Ed Hightower live in very affluent areas of Edwardsville. If this opportunity is so great, why are they not building them closer to their communities? This is a money-making opportunity for them that has the advantage of using tax credits to help fund their projects. Make no mistake about it, they are only in this to make money, for themselves and increase their influence. After a month of paying rent in an apartment, for an apartment in Sunnybrook, what do you have to show for it? You have nothing. You have no equity in your home, you have no equity in your town, and no equity in your future. And my next point, um, and so my next point would be that I understand that you have a comptroller that was recently appointed, and that's fantastic news, so I commend you for that. Um, and hopefully this will expedite the speed of our bank reconciliation and help close out the audit, which was, hopefully, could have been done this summer. I question, however, whether this position was left vacant for so long when it was the number-one point on Mayor Donens's list of priorities in his 13-point plan. Like, well, giving our cities financial records, audit, and reporting procedures in order were supposed to be done within the first 100 days. It took almost double that time to find someone to lead that department. But we have a comptroller nonetheless, six months later. The roll is finally filled, but that raises another question, though. For some reason, a new public works director had to be appointed at the time of the year inauguration. It's the only department here that did not carry over from the previous administration. While I like Mr. Parsons at a personal level, we share many common interests, there were some serious questions brought up at his appointment by Alderman Brake. The fact that these questions about qualifications were more or less brushed aside is downright embarrassing. It shows an extreme lack of due diligence by the members of the council, and questions about his grant-writing experience, weird questions about his grant-writing experience. The mayor defended his appointee by saying that Mr. Parsons will not be writing any grants. I don't think you understand how big of a misstatement that is. The fact that nobody thought to question it is mind-blowing, really. The ability to secure grants is a driving force behind any of the large capital expenditure projects that we have. The assumption made by Mr. Mayor in an effort to defend his appointee shows what I feel is a serious level of naivety and the understanding of the competencies needed for that role. And this frustration is only elevated by the fact that Mr. Parsons now has to team up with members of an outside organization, SIUE, if I remember correctly, to get them up to speed on how to write grants, because only now, after being in the role, has it understood how vital a competency this is. I cannot blame the blame exclusively on Mr. Parsons, though. He was set up to fail by the current administration. They chose to prioritize petty politics over sound human resource decision-making, which shows a level of naivety on their part. There were some other points made during the appointment, but we won't dive into that for the sake of time and sanity. But nonetheless, Mr. Parsons holds the office now, so I believe it is fair to examine the decisions he has made since holding the title of public works director. His first order of business, after coming into the role, was to restructure the paid wage scale for the Teamsters, an organization he was a part of for 30 years. While there are legitimate reasons to do this, related to updating experience requirements to ensure the description fits the expectations of those currently doing the job, there are also, there's also a cost associated with this. For the last few months, for my last few months in that office, I sat and watched firsthand as this was pushed through with a, with a complete disregard for its impact to the budget. The budget, which I might add, is razor-thin with no room for excess, and as can be seen by the severe tardiness in the administration's ability to produce one. the severe tardiness in the administration's ability to produce one. Time and time again, I, among others, fought against this initiative, explained that there are other ways to achieve this same goal, and this will do nothing to improve morale of employees, the morale of employees, or the quality of work being done. It will only worsen our budgetary woes. Inored time and time again, I see it as my duty now to bring this mismanagement forward in a more public setting. To be appointed to a position only to turn it around and give raises to the same people that you used to work with without ever, not even once, setting your eyes on the budget is not a great decision on my part. Another major responsibility of Mr. Parsons is that he is now charged with being our lead contact for FEMA and is responsible with overseeing the timely completion and documentation of all restoration projects, ensuring that they stay within the FEMA's strict guidelines. Within the first few weeks after taking office, the sitting of Alton lost out on approximately $250,000 in FEMA-related funding due to the inability to produce an appeal related to the damages at the Alton Marina. I know this because I was the one trying to scramble and save our appeal while Mr. Parsons was still adjusting to his transition. Not once did anyone done this transition from the new administration or Mr. Parsons reach out to his predecessor or the office staff to find out what was going on with this endeavor that has been going on for over two years now. They have actively inored and delegated these activities out to others who were not actively involved in this effort from the beginning and is now expecting those staff members to add this to their already overflowing workload and save the day. I do not know whether missteps have been taken since I've lead my position, but if it is on the same trajectory, then I am deeply concerned. I am concerned that the mayor's office is more focused on status symbols, including which vehicles they get to drive and what office furniture they have, rather than fact-based decisions, decision-making, and data-measured performance, picking up trash, which is a reactive course of action opposed to a proactive one for photo ops only those so far. It doesn't matter how many flowers you plant if you can't make payroll. We're trying to paint a house that's on fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you, Jacob.
And next we have Michael Bachelor, speaking about City Council current events.
Good evening. I am no stranger to anyone in front of me tonight. I've lived in Alton my entire life. I am terribly nervous and I hate public speaking, and most of you know that. I have sat in that front row right there for the better half of the last six years. I was with you all on those conference calls when we weren't allowed to meet in person for COVID-19, honestly making my attendance better than some of you in this room. As somebody who you all know well, I felt the need to address you all officially for the first time tonight on a pressing issue within our beloved city. That issue being the growing discourse and ineffectiveness that this governing body has become in the last few months. I am disappointed and disheartened to see what my city government has become. In the past few months, the only items of merit you have been able to pass as a group have been handicap parking spaces and street closures for parades and murals. You failed to adequately provide budget details, failed to take action against the downtown business that has had multiple infractions and should have had their license suspended if not revoked, failed to properly get wording right on multiple attempts to better monitor and regulate short-term rentals or another allowing alcohol sales during brunch hours. Look, I get it. The institutional memory that we lost in this room from former clerk Mary Bolts and corporate counselor Jim Shrimp was a tough blow. This is the first council in nearly three decades that has not had them to lead us from the front of this room. So I understand that there are new hurdles for allowing the newcomers to learn the ropes, but the glaring inadequacies of the gory law firm to write a proper ordinance aside, we are now five months into this collective body and we have nothing to show for it that was not already proposed or passed under the last administration. As somebody who ran for a position to be seated alongside of you, I touted my experiences and close relationships with many of you in this room to prove to my voters that I was up to the task and knew what was required of me. I was informed on most of the day-to-day operations and objectives of the administration and their agenda. I was ready to be on this city council that was ready to work on day one, but I have watched over the last few months as every other neighboring town has acted faster and more decisively than us. The only reason the city has gotten this far over the summer without falling apart is because our department heads have been doing the work with very limited staff and resources. In recent weeks, the discourse from within this room has ballooned from healthy disagreements into outright chaos, as some of you take cheap shots at those you disagree with. At the last council meeting in September during your nearly 70-minute executive session is where I have lost respect for some of you seated before me. As one of the youngest people in this room, I shouldn't have to tell you how to act like adults and not sink to the childish outbursts of that meeting. Police Chief Polito and Fire Chief Jameson should not be sitting on the steps with me and others while we listen to you scream and raise your tempers in this room. Did you know that in your long session, one of the groups who was here waiting for their chance to have their picture taken with their proclamation sat on the benches for nearly an hour before finally giving up? When we were allowed finally back into this room, this council was still out of order and talking out of turn. If your purpose was to discuss items that you didn't want the public privy to, don't air out your dirty laundry when we come back into the room. It was disgusting, it was shameful, and it was easily avoidable. The voters of this city elected 10 people in this room, nine of you are here right now. They all deserve better than how you acted two weeks ago. And finally, with one of the comments that has been haunting me over the last few weeks from a member in this room, it's really stuck with me. If your disdain or hatred for someone that is a department head or an elected official goes so far that you feel the need to say, and I quote, "I don't care about hurting their feelings, it is my job to make them suffer," then it is, in my opinion, you have no business having a job in public service. Your job is to represent the citizens of this city and not make someone suffer. But I'm not all doing them tonight. I'm not some random person off the street, as you know. You know me, which means I know all of you, and I know that you are more capable of getting things back on track. I want you to use my speech tonight as a wake-up call, because we have far greater challenges ahead. We have to find a way to get our finances in line, our budget as it now falls well short as what we've seen, and we have streets and sidewalks to repair and ordinance to get passed, and for the sake of our city, I hope we get past these hurdles and move forward. Thank you. And if you have any questions, you know we're on my list seated.
Thank you, Mr. Bachelor. Next on our agenda, seven, item 17, comments or resolutions from the City Council. Alderman Campbell.
I have two this evening. Another four, it'd be resolved by the City Council of City of Alton, Illinois, that the Public Works Department, Police Department, Fire Department, hereby authorize or effectuate the temporary closure of Riley Street between Johnson Street and Delaware Street on October 29, 2021, from 4:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m., conditioned upon Stephanie's place be responsible for any extra labor incurred by the city as it relates to this event. Stephanie's place will submit a certificate of insurance to the City of Alton prior to the closure of the street on October 29, 2021. And the second one, the Alton Roadrunners Club is sponsoring the road race in the City of Alton, which event constitutes a public purpose. The road race will require the temporary closure of eastbound lane of McAdams Highway, Route 100, and State Highway in the City of Alton from 7:30 a.m. till noon, November 27, 2021. The Illinois Highway Code authorizes the Department of Transportation to issue permits to local authorities to temporarily close portions of state highways for such public purposes. Permission to close off McAdams Highway and Broadway and Market to stink a lane as the above designated by the Department of Transportation. The Alton Roadrunners Club assumes full responsibility of the direction, protection, and regulation of the traffic during the time the detour. The police officers are authorized, flagos shall be at the expense of the Alton Roadrunners Club, be positioned at each end of closed sections. Be it fully resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Department of Transportation, District 8, to serve as a formal request for the permission sought in this resolution and to operate as part of the condition of said permission. I'd like to refer both to the committee of the whole.
Second.
Do we have anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'll need to find that one. Alderman McAfee.
Yes, and without council's objection, I have six resolutions that we would like to suspend the rules this evening on. So I'm going to read the resolutions all back-to-back, and then we can vote one time.
Have to be voted individually.
Individually for suspension of the rules. So the first one, a resolution authorizing a hiring freeze for all full and part-time City of Alton employees. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Alton, Illinois, that the City of Alton shall freeze all hiring for new or vacant civil service positions, are full or part-time in nature, to exclude any sworn police personnel, qualified firefighters, paramedics, and any other position deemed critical to public safety or delivery of essential services. Exemption for unspecified positions not mentioned above must be approved by a simple majority vote of the City Council. Be it resolved by the City Council that a hiring freeze is approved effective upon the passage of this resolution, which will expire on December 31, 2021. A resolution authorizing the closure of Franklin Street to facilitate the annual block party. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of City of Alton, Illinois, that the Public Works Department, Police Department, Fire Department hereby authorize and direct it to effectuate the temporary closure of Franklin Street between Central and Maple on Saturday, October 23, 2021, starting at 11 a.m. until October 24, 2021, at 1 a.m., conditioned upon Ronda Moore will be responsible for any extra labor cost incurred by the city as it relates to this event. Ronda Moore has submitted a certificate of insurance to the City of Alton. Resolution authorizing the approval of contract between the City of Alton and Mansfield Master Commercial Natural Gas Sales Agreement, therefore being resolved by the City Council. Section 1, the City Council hereby authorize approval of the contract between City of Alton and Mansfield Pile and Gas LLC. Section 2, the mayor of the City of Alton shall be and hereby is authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Alton, Illinois, the contract with Mansfield attached here Resolution authorizing the closure of East 4th Street to facilitate the Marquette Catholic High School Homecoming Dance, therefore be it resolved by City Council of Alton, Illinois, that the Public Works Department, Police, and Fire Department are hereby authorized and directed to effectuate the temporary closure of East 4th Street between East and George Street on October 23, 2021, 11 a.m. till 11 p.m., conditioned upon Marquette High School being responsible for any extra labor cost incurred by the city as it relates to this event. Marquette High School will submit a certificate of insurance to the City of Alton prior to the closure of the street on October 23, 2021. Two more. Resolution where as the Information Technology Director has recommended to renew the contract with Spectrum Enterprise, commonly known as Charter Communications, for a term of 60 months for internet service, hereby resolve the City of Alton, Illinois, that the mayor and appropriate city officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the attached terms of the service with Spectrum Enterprise. And the last one is amendment to ordinance number 7812, an ordinance making an annual appropriation for the City of Alton in the County of Madison, State of Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2021, and ending March 31, 2022. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Alton that the sum set out below are so much that there, that as many as may be authorized by law and be and the same are hereby appropriated to pay all necessary expenses and liabilities of the City of Alton for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2021, and ending March 31, 2022. Such appropriations are hereby made for the following purposes and objections. I make a motion to suspend the rules on all six of these resolutions that I just read.
Second. We'll sit through the suspend the rules?
Yes. Be the vote.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, one of them.
We need to vote on each one.
On each one.
Okay.
And the mayor votes on this.
The first one is the hiring freeze.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Does that include this position that we have open in IT? Does that exclude that position?
I would assume that it does, until we get a budget, until we know if we got money to hire a person.
Till they realize that if I get hit by a bus tomorrow, we're pretty much...
Well, I understand that. Maybe we can discuss that with Ryan after the meeting, or now.
Well, as the resolution is written, exemption's not specifically listed within the resolution that Alderman McAfee is presenting can be presented to council for a simple majority vote for approval.
Yeah. It does say exemptions for unspecified positions.
That is contained within that particular resolution. But we will need to vote suspend the rules and then vote on the actual resolution itself.
We gotta vote on the...we gotta get this on the floor first.
Yes, right.
Okay. So she's got called her own.
Yes.
Okay, this is for all six?
No, you have to vote for each individually.
We're voting for the hiring freeze right now.
Suspend the rules?
Yeah, you have to vote for that, but then you have to vote individually.
I just wanted to read all of them, just make it shorter.
Well, this was voted for the suspending the rules, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Campbell.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brack.
Aye.
Elliott. Keener.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent. And Mayor Goins.
Okay. So I make a motion to suspend the rules.
To approve, we just suspended the rules for approval. We just suspended the rules.
Okay. So one of them, let's do the amendment to the ordinance, because they have to have first and second reading if we suspend the rules.
Okay.
So the appropriation ordinance 7812. You'll have to do a first and second reading on it if we suspend the rules.
Did you...you're right, call for suspension.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, amendment to ordinance number 7812 for first reading, an ordinance making an annual appropriation for the City of Alton and the County of Madison, State of Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2021, and ending March 31, 2022. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Alton, Illinois, that the sum set out below are so much, or so much thereof as may be authorized by law, be and the same are hereby appropriated to pay all necessary expenses and liabilities of the City of Alton, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2021, and ending March 31, 2022. Such appropriations are hereby made for the following purposes and objects. Amendment to ordinance number 7812 for first reading.
So we need second reading?
Okay. Amendment to ordinance number 7812 for second reading, an ordinance making an annual appropriation for the City of Alton and the County of Madison, State of Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2021, and ending March 31, 2022. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Alton, Illinois, that the sum set out below, or so much thereof as may be authorized by law, be and the same are hereby appropriated to pay all necessary expenses and liabilities of the City of Alton, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2021, and ending March 31, 2022. Such appropriations are hereby made for the following purposes and objects. Amendment to ordinance number 7812 for second reading.
So I think we have to vote.
Is it making a motion?
Motion. I make a motion.
Second. Motion by Alderman McAfee, second by Alderman Campbell. Call the roll.
Campbell.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brack.
Aye.
Elliott. Keener.
Aye.
Mayor Goins. Seven ayes, no nays, one absent.
I make a motion on suspension of rules to, on authorizing freezing, do we vote for the suspension of the rules on it?
But we...so are we doing like a blanket as far as the suspension of rules and voting on them individually, or do we need to vote for the suspension for every one of them?
Yeah, we vote. I think we vote for suspension of every one.
I think we can just vote once for all the suspensions.
Well, let's vote once for each and then address each.
You want to address each one?
Yes, suspend the rules on each and then address, and then address the substance of each.
Resolution hiring, for the hiring freeze for all full and part-time?
Well, I thought you suspended the rules for all six.
But now I'm saying we have to vote each separately on each one. With the prove.
I would think so.
We voted on...
We voted on the suspension of the rules.
We've already voted, and they're all suspended.
Yeah, they're all suspended. We voted.
So.
Now we have to vote to approve.
And you seem to prefer...
Oh, you want me to go ahead and read it? A resolution authorizing the closure of Franklin Street to facilitate the annual block party. Resolution authorizing approval of the contract between the City of Alton and Mansfield Master Commercial Natural Gas Sales Agreement. Resolution authorizing the closure of East 4th Street to facilitate the Marquette Catholic High School Homecoming Dance, and the resolution where as the technology director has recommended a new contract with Spectrum Enterprise. I make a motion, we suspend the rules on all the, all one, these are five of them.
Second.
We have to just vote on it.
We already suspended the rules, so.
We have to vote on it.
We have to approve each one individually.
Mm-hmm.
We can vote.
Yeah.
So you just want to...
I just read them.
No, no, you want to make a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the hiring freeze.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Campbell.
Aye.
McAfee. Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brack.
Aye.
Elliott. Keener.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Okay, I make a motion on the resolution authorizing the closure of Franklin Street.
Campbell.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
This is a contract.
Brack.
Aye.
Elliott. Keener.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
I make a motion on the resolution to authorize the contract between the Mansfield Master Commercial, and this one is, I don't sign it.
I have a question on that one. Do we know whether, what kinds of provisions are in there for variable rates or anything like that?
The agreement is for a fixed rate, so that's why we're suspending the rules to adopt it, so we can lock in our rates for a three-year period.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay.
You call the roll.
Campbell.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brack.
Aye.
Elliott. Keener.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
I make a motion for the resolution authorizing the closure of... I make a motion for the resolution authorizing the closure of East 4th Street for the Marquette High School.
Second.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six A's, no N's, one absent.
Okay, now I make a motion for the...for the Information Technology Director to renew our contract with Spectrum.
Do you get like a locked-in rate or something, or is it a benefit for it?
Okay. Yeah, there's a...
Will we consolidate internet connections from here in the Police Department? And then that actually goes up $100 a month, so we get the same bandwidth between both buildings. But I use the extra funds to buy the new firewall for each location, so just to be able to watch at the end of the year, pretty much.
Okay. Did you second it?
I'll second.
Sorry.
Second by Alderman McAfee, second by Alderman Campbell. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
Six A's, no N's, one absent.
Mayor, what? Anything else?
I'm sorry, I don't have anything else.
Did you do the approve for Riley Street and Roadrunner?
I didn't have...
Oh, you did.
I went for suspension of rules.
Okay.
Committee of the whole.
Yeah. All right. How old is Mr. Taylor?
Point tonight, Mayor. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Alton, Illinois, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute the attached redevelopment agreement with Waterfront Properties 14 LLC pursuant to the terms of the Alton Tax Increment Finance Grant Program. I would like to make a motion to refer this to the committee as a whole.
Second.
How old is he? How old is he, Brown?
Yes. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Alton, Illinois, that the redevelopment agreement between the City of Alton, Illinois and Town Club of Alton Incorporated be amended throughout so as to change the developer receiving assistance from Town Club of Alton Incorporated to NGK Generous with all other terms and conditions remaining the same. I would like to make a motion to refer this to the committee as a whole.
Second. Okay, well, cheers for orders, I'm sorry, I should have been saying that.
Mrs. Second, I don't know.
Strabel?
Strabel. Cut you off.
What?
Cut you off.
Mayor, may I also...the freezing of hiring is good on one hand, but I just want to...I just wonder why is it not across the board? What departments are being frozen?
Well, definitely all, with the exception of Police Department, Fire Department.
Those that have union representation.
So the union fought against it or...
It's on the resolution.
Did the union fight against it?
I think that's a question for Ryan, did the resolution...
Yeah, it's just a matter of the fact that there are certain union contracts that don't allow us to freeze certain hiring, and so the resolution as written exempts the Police Department, the Fire Department, and those other public and safety sort of positions that are necessary for the function of the city. And in addition, the resolution also provides for any exemption that is not specifically listed within the resolution to be presented to the City Council for a simple majority approval. And I think that went to Mr. Swob's earlier comment about a position that's open in his department. So there is a provision within that resolution that does provide for a...for a position that might be frozen within that resolution to be presented to council and then voted upon and for approval by a simple majority.
Exactly. Good job.
Okay, can you think of us, Alderman Brown?
That's it, thank you.
Alderman Brake?
Have nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Elliott?
She's not here.
Alderman Keener?
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Geraldson?
Geraldson.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Yes, that's what I was getting ready to do. Second. Yeah.
Campbell?
Aye.
McAfee?
Aye.
Strabel?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brake?
Aye.
Elliott? Keener?
Aye.
One absent.
Well, I'm surprised.